Stay away from us, sir. Welcome, welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Oklahoma City Council Meeting. The meeting is called to order now. I'd like to ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Ortiz is absent. All others are present.
All right. Would you all please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing after that for a brief moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. The city clerk posted orders of adjournment of the May 27th, 2025 meeting and the agenda of the June 10th, 2025 meeting in accordance with state law, city council, and housing authority policy. We have a presentation today. We have a presentation, a proclamation for Ms. El Cajon's scholarship pageant. Will Mr. Don De Mars please come to the podium and accept the proclamation, which I will read? Hi, Don. Thank you. You got the pro- okay, great. There is a lot here. I'm just gonna skip to the last paragraph. Oh, you can't get away that easily. You have to, you have to stand up there and, and hold the proclamation and, and let me read at you. Now, therefore, I, Bill Wells, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma, together with the city council, do hereby proclaim 2025 to be the 62nd anniversary of the Ms. El Cajon Pageant in the City of Oklahoma. We further express our appreciation for the outstanding service this program has provided to the, to the community and for the positive influence it has been in the lives of so many young women for so many years. Signed this 10th day of June, 2025, Mayor Bill Wells. Thanks very much. Do you have a, wanna say just a little bit about your pageant and about who you brought with you?
Yes. So I really appreciate your support as we continue to serve the community of Oklahoma. This is really amazing for our organization and I'm really happy that you guys are able to support us and I'm really excited for the future of our pageant. So thank you.
What's your name?
I'm Jules Vescalotti. I'm the Teen Miss Oklahoma.
Great.
Thank you.
And who'd you bring with you?
My mom and Ladonna, part of our board, and Dawn, who's also a part of our board for CYE.
Well, thank you for coming. Congratulations. And 62 years, that's a, that's a pretty long run.
Yes, that's crazy. Thank you.
Good. Congratulations. Staff, do you have any agenda changes?
No changes, sir.
Counsel, how about you? That brings us to consent items, which are routine matters enacted by one motion according to the recommendation listed below. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member or person in attendance may request discussion of a consent item at this time. Councilmembers, do you wish to pull any of the consent items? Steve? Which one?
I'd like to talk about number seven and number 10.
Hold that thought for a second. Let me ask Staff. Do you have any to pull, Staff?
Mr. Mayor, we have placed on your, on the dais near your podium, a correction to the minutes from the last meeting. In the minutes, it read East County Regional Homeless Task Force or Homeless Task, East County Homeless Task Force, where it should have been Regional Homeless Task Force. That would be the only correction we would have.
Thanks very much. I appreciate it. Okay, Steve, let's talk about number seven.
Number seven, the city manager and I talked. I had some concerns about the language in the resolution. That the bidder did not provide a signature at the time of the bid. I'm okay with it didn't create an unfair advantage for that bidder, but that I have trouble with the language of the resolution. So rather than go through it all, Mr. City Manager, what, I don't see any revision up here. What, what did you decide?
Thank you. Mr. Gold, Mr. Mitchell and I discussed this and unfortunately I had some appointments and my computer wasn't working until Mr. McDonald of IT miraculously restored my ability to revise this. Let me read to you what I think you intended based on your conversation with Mr. Mitchell. The original agreement, the original resolution has a number of whereas clauses and I think that your proposal is to remove the sixth one and move it down to what would be a new eighth one with some modification. To make some slight changes in what is now the, the eighth whereas clause. It used to be the ninth. And you'd be, we'd be removing some language so that it would read, whereas the city council has the discretion to waive the principal signature requirements and approve the absence of the principal signatures as immaterial in the bid's evaluation, but is ultimately required for the, this bid's award. The preceding whereas clause would, would be a portion of what was, this was split off of. And then the, the moved former six would go into the ninth position or 10th position, say, whereas upon notification, NGS provide a signature for both documents in person, making it eligible for award.
Thank you. So I guess, do I need to make a motion to amend the resolution?
Yeah, sure.
And do you need me to, to cite those amendments or to agree with how you've stated those?
No, you could simply indicate that the approval of this, of item seven is with. Seven is with the changes as reflected in, by the city attorney at the time of the meeting.
Okay. Before you go down that road, I want to check and see if there's any speaker cards. But you want to go ahead and talk about 10, since we're?
Yeah, 10. We should acknowledge, and I'm glad to acknowledge, that the $21,428, $428.09 for purchase of an ultrasonic PPE cleaner came as a result of an anonymous donor and also the firefighting, I believe it's San Diego Firefighting Foundation, covered the difference, was a little over $1,000. And I'd like to thank both of those, the anonymous donor and for the foundation publicly for contributing those costs so that there was no expense to the taxpayer. And we're grateful for their support of our firefighters. That is our comment on number 10.
Do you have any speaker cards?
No speaker cards, sir.
All right, Steve, I'll give it back to you. Why don't you go ahead and make the motion for the whole lot?
Sounds good. I'll make a motion to approve the consent item with the provision on item number seven, that it reflect the comments as stated by the city attorney during council meeting. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present.
We're now at public comment. At this time, any person may address a matter within the jurisdiction of the city council, housing authority, successor agency to the El Cajon Redevelopment Agency that is not on the agenda. Comments relating to items on today's agenda are already be taken at the time that the item is heard. State law prohibits discussion or action on items not on the agenda. However, city council and housing authority members may briefly respond to statements or questions, and an item may be placed on a future agenda. Angela, do we have any speaker cards for public comment?
We have one, sir, from Brenda Hammond.
Hey, Brenda.
Hi. First of all, a different color balloon. But most importantly, I'm not going to crack. I found this today for a dollar. Cute, huh?
What is it?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know, but it was marked out from like 10 bucks to a dollar or so.
I think my dog would like it.
Okay, you could have it.
No, it's okay. I think, I think there's probably a log as we take dog toys.
He might choke.
But, but thank you. I'll, I'll tell him that you thought of it.
Gee, thanks. So I want to talk about anger. Coming here, I was very angry when I left where I was, but I stopped at the Chaldean church, calmed down, and then came here. 9/11, our Chaldean, my Chaldean friends personally were blamed. And I didn't like that. Now, what's, what's happening in LA and is coming down here to San Diego, my Mexican friends are going to get blamed. I, I understand that there's a little bit from everybody, but that group that's up there causing that problem is not my Mexican friends. And I'm very angry about it. I'm angry that when they come down here, the Democratic cities are going to let everything happen. Okay, I better be nice because I have to go back. So making somebody angry when they're already angry or sad or, you know, whatever their emotions, playing on their emotions should be against the law. Because you don't know if that person's going to hurt somebody. Me, I'm going to drop the F-bomb. Ask our lieutenant. Thank you.
Thanks. Let's all pray that nothing bad happens. Is that the last public comment? Okay. There are no written communications on today's agenda. We have one public hearing on today's agenda. Item 11 is for the amendment of the mobile home permit fees. And staff will tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. We have annually taken care of changes to various fees and they all go, all go into effect on July 1st. We did this earlier this year. We actually, I think, amended it once since then. And now we ask another amendment. And that's because the state has informed us that there is a new fee for mobile home park inspections that we need to charge mobile home property owners, park property owners. Instead of going on a basis of the number of units and having sort of a scaled fee, it now becomes a flat fee for every unit, every space of $7. Since our prior resolution that approved fees did not know, did not include that, and staff wasn't aware of that, we've asked for yet another amendment, but it will take effect again on July 1st. And that way, the proper fees can be charged to the owners and the city won't have to be reimbursing the state for money that it didn't collect.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor, do you have any questions? Public hearing is now open. Angela, do you have any speaker cards for this item?
No speaker cards, sir.
Make a motion and then to close the public hearing. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present.
Fairly perfunctory. Anybody like to make a motion? Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present.
We have six administrative reports on today's agenda. Item 12 is for the adoption of the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account list of proposed projects for fiscal year '25 through '26. And staff will tell us about this. Hi, Mario. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mario Sanchez, Engineering Services. I'd like to introduce Mr. Zane Hannah, our Associate Engineer in Engineering Services.
Welcome, Zane.
He'll make a presentation on our SB 1 RMRA report. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff members. My name is Zane Hannah. I'm one of the Associate Engineers in our City of El Cajon Engineering Services Department. Item number 12 before you today is to consider adoption of our Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account list of proposed projects for fiscal year '26. For some quick background, SB 1, or Senate Bill 1, is the Road Repair Accountability Act of 2017, a California law that funds significant transportation projects throughout the state and funds approximately over $5.4 billion to the state annually. SB 1 curates various programs, including the Local Streets and Roads Program that I'm here today to tell you about. This Local Streets and Roads Program is mainly composed of two groups, the California Transportation Commission and the State Controller's Office. The CTC holds many responsibilities, but some of the main responsibilities are adopting program, adopting program reporting guidelines, review proposed projects, list and expenditure reports submitted from cities and counties, and transmit those eligible lists of cities and counties to receive RMRI funds to the State Controller's Office. And finally, the State Controller's Office is responsible for dispersing the funds to the eligible cities and counties. Now, how much does the City of El Cajon approximately receive of RMRI funds each year? Well, as shown as on the table provided, for fiscal year '25, the City of El Cajon was projected to receive just under $2.7 million. And now for the upcoming fiscal year '26, the City of El Cajon is approximated to receive just under $2.8 million. And while these are just projections, the actual totals are usually very close to these projections. Now, to meet reporting requirements, here is a list of proposed projects that'll be using the upcoming fiscal year 2026 RMRI funds. Both these projects are paving projects, starting with our overlay 2026 project, focused in Maintenance Zone 1 and Fletcher Hills neighborhoods. And this zone is highlighted in purple in the exhibit provided. The second project is our Asphalt Spot Repairs 2026 project, focused in Maintenance Zone 2 in our Central Valley neighborhoods. This zone is shown in the exhibit also highlighted in yellow. These projects are just now being developed, which means these projects are in the very early planning stages and design, hence locations being generalized. Because of these reasons, the California Transportation Commission is okay with the cities submitting proposed projects like this, which the city will have an opportunity in the future to update the project locations during the expenditure report cycle. And now, while we're on the topic of the city's paving projects and maintenance zones, I wanted to briefly touch on the city's paving program. First and foremost, I provided on the slide a map of the city's maintenance zones, which closely resembles the city's council districts. On this map includes Zones 1 and 2, which are highlighted on the previous slide for new proposed projects. Generally, there are three main types of paving projects within the city, which are our Mill and Pave Overlay Project, which is generally our most expensive type of paving project, along with our Asphalt Spot Repairs and Slurry Seal Project. And our Asphalt Spot Repairs is a very critical project because it allows us to prepare our streets for slurry. Now, getting our attention back to the city's maintenance zones, the city typically utilizes a maintenance zone cycling for its paving program, where two maintenance zones are focused in each fiscal year. Most paving projects have approximately 80% of its construction funds in its own focus area and 20% addressing citywide needs. This cycle, this cycle is typically in a clockwise fashion and allows for each zone to be maintained at least two times every five years. This methodology allows cities to implement proper paving strategies, be cost-effective, and creates efficient project planning. On this side here, although many familiar, many people here are familiar with the impact of, the positive impact to paving on streets, I wanted to highlight that on this slide, which shows some photos of conditions of roads before and after they receive an overlay. Not only does the paving projects change the condition of the road, it provides the city an opportunity to evaluate the existing striping and how that can be improved, such as intersections that may be good for crosswalks. Does our bike master plan count for bike lanes? Has our residents made specific safety or striping requests? All these are important considerations our engineering team takes seriously and looks to improve for paving projects. And we usually see a positive impact on safety and street usability with these changes. I wanted to touch on the city's upcoming summer 2025 overlay project. This project was listed on a previous fiscal year RMRI proposed project list, but now we have final locations after we finish design and planning and are gearing towards construction starting next week with the city's contractor Eagle Paving. Locations being paid include many high-traffic arterials, such as Chase, Fletcher Parkway, Broadway, Main Street, and many other streets. This project is one of the biggest city's paving projects in the past decade. And the lowest responsive bidder was just over $5.7 million. And both transient, which is both transient and RMRI funded. And with that, I have staff's recommendation, which is adopt the next resolution in order of adopting the proposed list of projects to be funded from the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, Local Streets and Roads Funding Program for fiscal year '25, '26, and direct staff to submit to the California Transportation Commission a list of proposed projects to receive RMRI funding for fiscal year '26. And I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions?
And this is kind of related. So if we, for example, Molson. Molson has a lot of speeders. And I'm not saying, Mario, this is what I want to do. But if we wanted to slow down traffic, if we wanted to, and we're on the list to have, I believe it's an overlay on that area. If we wanted to maybe reduce the lanes down to one lane each direction and put a turn lane in the center for some of that traffic slowing down, would that be something we need to get to you now? Or soon, before you start making your list of which streets you're going to be working on?
Yeah, so if...
That would be a bigger analysis. So we would need to do a traffic analysis to look at the impact.
Right.
So it would, that could be a multi-year process. In order to do that, that would take another set of funds. We would recommend, if there are some recommendations for that, we'd recommend we do that outside of this process.
Okay. I, I was just curious. I'm just using Molson as an example. It could be Chase, it could be Washington, it could be Madison. It could be a multitude of streets. Madison's already one lane each way. But I was just kind of curious if that's something that we wanted to, to do in certain neighborhoods, then now I understand it's a separate project from this. That's all I had. Thank you.
Zane, welcome.
Thank you.
If there were such a thing where we converted, as Councilmember Mitchell said, to one lane with a middle turn lane, wouldn't that come before the council for approval first?
Yeah, that, that would be part of our, actually part of our circulation master plan. And it actually opens up that portion of the general plan. So it's, there's several steps that you would probably review that process.
Okay, so it wouldn't be a surprise to us, is what I'm saying.
That's correct. That's correct.
Do any of these projects require that we put in bike lane striping?
Typically, for whenever we go into an overlay project or slurry project, we look to, look at our bike master plan to see if it calls out for bike lanes. And we also look, you know, we've, as engineers, look to evaluate also to see if a street may be applicable for a bike lane. There's no requirement necessarily to put in bike lanes, but I, I think if, you know, it's feasible and, you know, it's, you know, within a reasonable scope of work, we'd be looking to add bike lanes in areas where it's called out in the bike, bike master plan.
Okay, thank you.
And it's because these are SB 1 monies. That, that does not trigger the bike lane requirements.
SB 1 does not trigger the bike.
That's correct.
Got it. So it's up to us in this situation. Okay. Did I hear you say Eagle Paving is going to be the contractor for the big stuff?
That's correct for the upcoming overlay summer project.
They did a great job in the past month on Second Street between the freeway and Broadway. They, they did that whole thing like in two days. I mean, they had a little bit of wrap-up and stuff. There was a little bit of disruption to traffic. They tried to do it as early as they could. But I have every confidence in Eagle doing this project because they're, it was the least disruption to the public and it's great quality. It's what people ask for, is good roads. I'm glad to hear they got the job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Gary? Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Do you have speaker cards for this item?
No speaker cards, sir.
All right, then it's back to council for discussion and/or a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present.
You're back for the next one, right? Zane, are you back for this one, too? Oh, okay. Item 13 is for the acceptance of El Cajon Boulevard Streetscape Project. And I'll let the staff tell us about this.
Hello. Give me one moment to get set up. All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. I'm Sanon Kachi of the City's Engineering Services Department. Item 13 before you today is to consider acceptance of the El Cajon Boulevard Streetscape Project. City's general contractor was TriGroup Construction and Development. They began construction in early 2022 and completed, reached substantial completion at the end of '24. This project constructed a single-lane roundabout at the El Cajon Boulevard and Johnson Avenue intersection, dozens of new decorative streetlights on El Cajon Boulevard, new sidewalks, street trees, parklets or outdoor seating areas, new storm drain infrastructure, landscaping, irrigation, and more. So before we get into more project details, I think it's important to discuss why the city decided to take this aggressive and forward-thinking approach. It's a question that I got almost daily out on the construction site. Here's the intersection of El Cajon Boulevard and Johnson prior to the work. From 2015 to 2020 alone, there were at least 17 injury-related collisions, four traffic signal knockdowns, traffic signal poles. And, and these are large poles. When that happens, that shuts down the street. City has to mobilize contractors to clear the debris, set temporary signals, order custom poles, come back and set the new poles. So these are all costing the taxpayers thousands of dollars. And in some cases, you know, we go after insurance, but that's not always successful. I'll just use this slide to flash a before and after. So the old intersection had poor visibility around corners and some of the longest crosswalks in the city. You can see those are greatly reduced with, with the new intersection. Pedestrians could be in the roadway for almost up to a minute. You know, at 150 feet, imagine you're walking half a football field in, in the line of cars. And then just powering the traffic signal alone was costing the city about $20,000 a year. So in 2018, the city council adopted the Transit District Specific Plan, rezoning thousands of property. of properties in the area and really promoting public and private investment in this area. That immediately made the city highly competitive for grant funding, which is aimed at solving many of the safety issues we just discussed. So Sandag, the following year, awarded the city with $2.5 million, and the San Diego River Conservancy awarded $250,000. So after a difficult and complex construction period in a short time here, El Cajon residents are already experiencing the benefits of the project. Speeds are down. It is very difficult to navigate this roundabout at unsafe speeds. Severe T-bone-type collisions are almost impossible with the new configuration, and those type of collisions became all too often with the previous setup, you know, people just trying to catch that green light. And as discussed earlier, the new crosswalks are no longer than forty feet long, which really reduces that pedestrian's exposure time to vehicles. Vehicle queuing and idling is down and level of service is up. The traffic studies during implementation of the 2018 TDSP were based on three functional roundabouts along this corridor. We're already seeing improved traffic flows with just the single roundabout so far. For most formal traffic studies, staff compiles at least five years of data, so it's still too early to draw final conclusions of the roundabouts effects. That's something we'd like to approach the council later with more formal data as we get more data. And then here we have the previous condition along El Cajon Boulevard. This is near El Cajon Blueprint, if you're familiar with that business. The roadway was very wide and parking conditions were chaotic. On most days, vehicles are double and triple parked. As you know, El Cajon Boulevard is older than I-8, and this area was very, made very wide to accommodate the traffic flows, but once the freeway came about, this width is no longer necessary. So getting to the businesses was difficult, and you'd have to zigzag your way through illegally parked cars sometimes. So here's present day after completing the project. We've essentially increased each business's footprint, creating outdoor seating areas and organized diagonal parking, all very similar to our successful downtown improvements just down the block. We've already seen new businesses embrace these areas, making it part of their business plan, whether it be a dining area for the restaurant right at this location, or just an overflow waiting area for the busy barbershop across the street. So we'll conclude with a little short two-minute video of the new improvements. So this is on El Cajon Boulevard, what I call heading eastbound coming into the city. You have Harley-Davidson to your right. This is where we have the transition from two lanes down to one. You've got all those permanent outdoor dining or sidewalk parklet areas we discussed on your right-hand side and left. You know, these were all vast asphalt areas, just kind of dead space. We've got numerous decorative light poles added, you know, really increasing nighttime safety. Those are the black decorative poles on the shoulders. The median lighting was existing. Then you see the few empty lots on your left-hand side. They're either being developed or going to be developed, and that's a, you know, an effect of the new TDSP rezoning. Now, as we approach the roundabout itself, in the center island there, the concrete area surrounding the planted area, that's for trucks, designed, very thick concrete, designed for trucks to go over, semi-trucks to make their maneuvers. And then where you see all of the darker pavement, that's a brand-new road. That's anywhere from seven to ten inches thick of asphalt, over two feet of road base. That's a significant structural section. This thing is built to last. And then I'll end it here, and I just want to say thanks to our police department for providing this awesome footage, specifically Detective Frias. Okay, and now with that, I have staff's recommendation for accepting the El Cajon Boulevard Streetscape Project and authorizing the city clerk to record a notice of completion and release the bonds. I'm available for any questions.
Counsel, before, before questions, I just wanted to add, we, a frequent question that we hear is, don't you have things better to spend on, in your community than this? Homelessness, other things? Remember, this was a grant specifically for traffic improvements in this area, so we could not have used it for those other purposes anyway.
Thank you very much. Nice presentation. I want to tell you, I love driving that, that roundabout, or what do you call it? It is a roundabout.
We've heard Peanut Roundabout, we've heard Dog Bone.
I love it, it's fun. You know, you're just driving along and, and, I don't know, I get through there fast. So if I have to go on that side of town from the north end, I purposely go down Johnson just so that I can go through that area, because it's fast, it's easy, and it's fun. But, you know, I appreciate all the work. It looks great, and, you know, maybe we can have a city event or something down where all those tables are, set up tents and go down there and utilize that area and kind of bring attention to it. But thank you, nice job.
Thank you.
I want to thank the staff for an outstanding job on that project. I mean, it really looks good. It smoothed out the traffic, you know, you're not worried about someone T-boning you when you're going across the intersection. You don't have to race across the sidewalk there and to get across a street. I mean, it's a win all the way around, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was a great project. I know it was frustrating. The contractor, I think we still have a holdback pending some things. I think I read 284 days of delay. That's like one year and two months worth of delays, so I'm glad to see we're holding some money back till that's resolved. You know, we heard complaints about, oh, the city's putting in roundabouts, and, oh, why roundabouts? Nobody knows how to drive roundabouts. But there's been a roundabout at the top of West Main Street at West Wind for at least ten years, and people know how to drive that roundabout because they get used to it, those that travel. In the same way, people will become comfortable and confident as they drive through here. It's a great design. You've got a lot of great greenscape instead of asphalt, which is fantastic. I see speeds are down from 39 miles an hour to 36 miles an hour, even with the volume higher. We should also thank the San Diego River Conservancy for a generous gift. They've been good, I know the city attorney doesn't like the word partner, because that involves some legal things, doesn't it? But a great supporter, how about we say that? I think they contributed money for our fire truck, which we're going to acknowledge soon. So thanks again to the River Conservancy for supporting this project as well.
Thank you.
Gary?
Oh, I said my piece.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Ms. Mayor.
Great, great presentation. I really liked the drone footage at the end. It made it much more real. Thanks. Have any speaker cards on this item?
No speaker cards, sir.
All right, then it's back to the council for discussion and/or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
All right. Move in second, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present.
Item 14 is regarding the Engine 208 staffing, side letter agreement with El Cajon Professional Firefighters, and I'll ask staff to tell us about this.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Engine 208, as you recall, back in February, we had the Fire Coverage Workshop, in which we discuss the need for enhanced fire and emergency services out of Station 8. As a result of that discussion, staff was directed to have a plan for a full engine implementation through a gradual approach so that we could be fiscally responsible. As a result of that plan, we had to get an engine, which we've acquired. We had to recruit, which we're in the progress of recruiting, determine how to expand, and also look at our labor contract to determine if we needed to make modifications. This item before you is that labor contract modification. It addresses a few issues as far as how we face in the staffing. So this PowerPoint's pretty simple, I'll be pretty quick, but I want to point out too, one of the biggest concerns was how do we staff Engine 208 through a gradual approach, through a fair approach? And so currently, we have the Kelly schedule for firefighters. We have A, B, and C shifts, so you could see that with the colors of blue, green, and red. And so those are the fours and sixes, meaning that in a seven-day period, our staff work four days with days off in between, and then they're off. So we are going to temporarily introduce a 4896 schedule. That means that the first group of firefighters that we bring on will not be part of our traditional Kelly schedule. They'll be on a 4896, working two 24-hour shifts, then they're off for four days. And so I wanted to show this to you because I do know that this was a big deal during our discussion, and it's a big deal for our staff because we want to ensure that everybody's reaping the benefits of this new engine company. So if you look at the visual that I have here, the stars are the new schedule that we would face in with our current Kelly schedule. So you could see that the new engine company will touch on every shift there. The second change to our memorandum of agreement, the labor contract, is how we do our minimum staffing. So right now, we have a minimum staffing of seventeen, and so we will temporarily increase it to twenty to reflect the partial implementation of the engine so that we are not dropping down to seventeen just because we have a new engine, because then it basically negates the new engine. And we are also going to address the unplanned overtime, so we do have some exclusions for that again, so we could best use our resources and also not burn out our staff. So with that, I leave this recommendation for you to approve and authorize this side letter agreement, and then I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Questions? Everybody's happy with this arrangement?
Yes, so we worked with the labor group, and actually, the labor group is the one who brought forth the 4896 schedule. So we partnered with them on writing the language, and this was their approach, and it actually worked out really well. It doesn't have any FLSA implications for overtime, and it does touch on every shift, which is really what they wanted to see with the partial implementation of an engine.
Would those working the 4896 be subject to forced, forced shift?
So everyone is subject to unplanned overtime, which is what we used to call forced overtime.
Sorry for using the wrong term.
But, no, it's okay. We're trying to have a more delicate approach, optimistic approach. But, so everybody is subject to that, but there are some restrictions, again, because we do not want to have any burnout, but we also want to provide coverage with the new engine.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Any questions? No? Thanks very much. Great presentation. Any speaker cards on this item?
No speaker cards, sir.
All right, then it's back to the city council for discussion and/or a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present.
Brings us to item 16, which is for the fiscal year '25, '26 preliminary annual budget. And staff, please tell us about this.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Megan Blake would love to give her agenda item, which is agenda item 15.
Did I skip something?
You did skip that one.
Oh. I didn't think Megan was ready. Let me go back to that one, I'm sorry. Yeah, there it is, I'm sorry. Item 15 is regarding an Assembly Bill 2561, Presentation: City Vacancies, Recruitment, and Retention Efforts. And here's Megan to tell us all about it.
Thank you so much. So hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I am Megan Blake, the HR manager, and I am presenting on the city's employee vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts as required by California Assembly Bill 2561. So today's agenda will go over the new state law, the intent and requirements, the vacancy rates for the city, and also the recruitment and retention efforts by Human Resources. So effective January 1st, 2025, Assembly Bill 2561 added Government Code Section 3502.3, imposing new obligations on public agencies related to tracking and presenting job vacancies. AB 2161 declares that job vacancies at local governments are a widespread and significant problem for the public sector. High job vacancies impact public service delivery and workers who are then forced to carry heavier workloads, with understaffing leading to burnout and increased turnover. So AB 21, or 2561 requires that on an annual basis, public agencies have to assess and address vacancy rates and recruitment and retention efforts, including any obstacles to the hiring process. The agency then must present this information to the governing body. If an employee group has a vacancy rate of twenty percent or more, the employee group can request additional information from the city. All employee groups are required to be notified of the presentation date and time, and then be given an opportunity to make a presentation as well if they so choose. So here you will see listed the vacancy rates as of December 31st, 2024. So 829 executive and unrepresented employees have a seven percent rate. El Cajon Municipal Employees Association had fifteen percent. El Cajon Professional Firefighters Association had five percent. El Cajon Police Officers Association had one percent. El Cajon Police Officers Association Management Group had zero percent, and El Cajon Midmanagement and Professional Employees Group had five percent. Overall, the citywide vacancy rate was eight percent as of the state. Also, you'll note that none of our groups had hit that twenty percent threshold that they can request additional information. So next, I will be going over the recruitment efforts. So in addition to posting on governmentjobs.com, HR will often post positions to association websites. So for example, a paramedic firefighter is posted to Daily Dispatch. Engineering positions are posted to American Society for Civil Engineers. Public Works positions are posted to American Public Works Association, and then most positions are posted to Handshake, which is the job board for local community colleges and universities. Both fire and police have recruitment committees that attend career fairs at high schools, local colleges, and sometimes community events, and this allows employee, or people of the community to speak with subject matter experts on positions at the city. We also post on LinkedIn and social media. The city also offers internships, specifically working with the San Diego State Public Administration Program. Interns have worked in various departments, including the City Manager's Office, engineering, and community development, and we have had success with a few of these interns turning into full-time employees. The city has also participated in the World of Work Program with Bostonia Global High School, introducing government work to a younger generation. So Public Works has had students working with fleet maintenance, with the traffic crew changing out street signs, and then also with administrative staff in the office. And then fire has had a group of students training in fire gear, doing basic tasks with on-duty personnel, exposing them to the fire service. We also have the Fire Reserve Program and the Cadet Program, which exposes people to their respective professions, as well as the city of El Cajon, in the hopes that we are the preferred employer when they become eligible for these positions. And lastly, I'll go over the retention efforts. So the city offers competitive benefits through the Cafeteria Benefit Plan. In 2024, Human Resources put on monthly wellness events, and some examples of those were a walking challenge in January. challenge in January, a plant party in May, and a benefits and wellness fair in August. We also have the We Are One Committee and events that they host. So this is a committee of employees who put together events for employees to meet across departments, fostering relationships. And some of these events that were coordinated in 2024 were volunteers for the wall that heals, and also scoops for schools where donations were collected for school supplies for El Cajon's local schools during an ice cream sundae party. We also do succession planning and have training and development opportunities available for employees. And that is the conclusion of my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any questions? Apparently, you did a good job. No questions? Thanks.
Thank you. We'll be back next year.
Okay, well, look forward to it. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
Okay, that brings back the council for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just jump in with a comment. I think it's an excellent effort by all city staff. It's not just HR, but HR really is the department that has to process a lot of these things, not just gather applications, but move them along and background checks. So great effort to keep those numbers down low, especially among the police and firefighters, which are very competitive right now. So it's not just, I think their efforts are very creative. I've never heard of Handshake. I've never heard of some of these things, and you know what they are. So good job. It's a very expansive effort in recruiting. And retention, it's not just about keeping people, it's making people proud where they work, and that their effort makes a difference to the stakeholders, which in this case are the residents. So I think you do an excellent job in making employees feel like they actually make a difference here. So great job by the HR, as well as all the departments that integrate with HR in the hiring and retaining process. I guess with that, I'll go and make a motion to approve the staff recommendation to receive the report.
I'll second. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present.
The next administrative report, item 16, is for fiscal year 2526 preliminary annual budget. And I'll ask Clay to tell us about this.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of the city council. My name is Clay Shane. I'm the Finance Director for the city of El Cajon. We're here today to present some information pertaining to the fiscal year 26 annual budget. Today's presentation, we will briefly discuss the budget process and the state of the economy. We'll give you a brief overview of the draft budget as it currently sits. We'll discuss and introduce a few balancing options, and then we will open up the discussion and answer any questions you have. The budget process usually starts as part or an extension of our five-year business plan. This long-term planning document is updated annually and gives us an idea of the financial conditions of the city as we lead into the budget season. Following that and direction from the city manager, departments prepare and submit their requests for the following year. We then take those requests, we review, compile, and balance, and present to the city council for adoption. This is for the fiscal year that begins July 1st. Next, I'll change gears a little bit and go to the economy. The GDP for first quarter of 2025 was down 0.2%, driven primarily by a significant drop in import activity. This is a reduction from 2.4% growth in the first, excuse me, fourth quarter of 2024. Unemployment rate nationally is just under 4%. Here in the San Diego region, we are just north of 4%. However, statewide unemployment is north of 5%. Inflation currently is about 2.5%. This is considerably better than it was in the years immediately following the COVID issues. However, it's still above the Federal Reserve's target inflation rate of 2%. Overall, most people's outlook on the economy is a little guarded. Trying to assess right now if we're in a period of transition or if we're at the beginning of an economic downturn. At this point, I'd like to introduce the city's primary, or excuse me, principal fiscal analyst, Autumn Reberger, to run us through some numbers. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. As Mr. Shane mentioned, my name is Autumn Reberger. I am the principal fiscal analyst for the city of El Cajon. I'll be presenting the draft budget overview portion of this presentation. Beginning here, we have the 2025-26 expenditure totals by fund type. Of the $285.1 million operating budget, $105.4 million is allocated to the general fund. This draft 2025-26 overview currently includes 415 funded full-time equivalent positions, of which 357.5 are general fund staff, consisting of 250.5 public safety personnel, and 107 non-public safety. This is a 10-year lookback of the full-time equivalent staffing levels across all funds. As presented here, we would like to note a few important details. This 2025-26 draft overview does not include the over-hire of police officers. This does include three full-time equivalents of the new Fire Engine Company, or one-third of that crew. There are no new CIP fundings included. There is no new vehicle replacement funding included, and we are currently out of balance by $4.2 million. This 2025-26 draft budget overview estimates a beginning fund balance of $61.2 million, revenues of $101.2 million, expenditures of $105.4 million, resulting in a potential ending fund balance of $56.9 million. Taking a look at the 2025-26 general fund revenue, we anticipate $101.2 million in general fund revenues. Sales tax, Prop J, and property tax continue to be the majority of the city's revenue sources, consisting of approximately three-quarters of the general fund revenue for a combined total of approximately $75 million. Here is a side-by-side view of the estimated fiscal year 2024-25 general fund revenue totals and the fiscal year 2025-26 draft budget totals. As presented, we show a 3.3% growth. However, this amount is slightly inflated due to a change in accounting practice regarding the way we record charges for service. The additional revenue reflected is offset by similar amount in expenditures, resulting in a net zero outcome. With the process change removed, growth is truer to a 1.9% increase, which is consistent with a slowed economic growth environment. Looking at the draft 2025-26 general fund expenditures, we see that police and fire represent nearly three-quarters of the $105.4 million budget, which continues to signify council's commitment to public safety. Looking at a side-by-side view of the fiscal year 2024-25 general fund expenditure budget totals and the fiscal year 2025-26 draft budget overview, you can see some significant changes depicted, specifically in public works, engineering, and park and recreation departments. This is a result of a restructure of the former public works department. Here's a different view of the draft general fund expenditures for 2025-26. Looking at expenses by type, you can see that personnel-related expenditures are approximately 80% of the $105.4 million general fund budget. We will return to council on June 24th, at which point, we will pick up any changes as a result of today's meeting, and share information on other funds, as well as capital improvement projects, and take action to set the fiscal year 2025-26 appropriations. Now, I'll turn the remainder of the presentation over to the city manager to discuss balancing options.
Thank you.
Thank you, Autumn. If we can get to the next slide. Thanks. So part of the goal of today's meeting is to get an understanding of how to balance a budget. I think we've come up with some potential solutions and some options for the city council. But let me just walk you through where we're at right now and kind of reiterate some of the messages from finance staff. As you know, as was indicated, we have less revenues coming in than anticipated expenditures, resulting in a deficit of $4.2 million projected for next fiscal year. Go to the next slide. We've initially created, we've initially identified about $2.1 million in cuts. So that $2.1 million actually takes the deficit in half to 2.1. If we go to the next slide, these cuts are pretty, some of them easy, some of them not easy. One of them would be a hiring freeze to save almost $1 million. So those vacancy rates that Ms. Blake just presented will be higher going into next fiscal year with a goal to keep public safety, vacancy rates at close to zero as possible. So that would affect all the other departments in the city. We would also reduce some funding of some sinking funds or some other funds that we typically put money into. So we would get really thin, some thin margins on those funds. We would probably see some recommended staff reductions or staff modifications longer term, rather than just holding back filling positions. And then we've also taken a pretty significant reduction in staff training across the board. So that gets you to the $2.1 million amount. We'll go back to the next slide. So we've also identified deeper cuts of about $1.2 million. So this gets us to under a million-dollar deficit, $900,000. But getting to this next level of cuts of 1.2, those are pretty significant. If we go to the next slide. And I'll share some of those in just a second. This would leave, again, the $900,000 to be covered by the use of the general fund reserves, or the council may want to consider additional general fund reserves, up to $2 million. Staff would not recommend any more than $2 million. And I'll explain that as we conclude. If we can go to the next slide. I wanted to show some data that we analyzed to justify the use of general fund reserves. This is not a matter of us not living within our means. This clearly is a matter of a drop in sales tax, which is our number one revenue source. So this table shows sales tax actual amounts received or projected amounts received in the far-left column. It shows the growth rate. As you can see, we have a negative growth rate for the previous two years and a very modest growth rate for this upcoming year. We also looked at what if we had a normal rate of growth of about 2.3. And by the way, 2.3% growth in sales tax is a typical growth for the city of El Cajon. Sometimes 2.5, up to 2.8, but 2.3 would be a conservative growth. If we were not experiencing an economic downturn, if we were not in a recession, although not declared a recession yet, clearly, our sales tax is showing recessionary tendencies. We would actually have about $3 million more in sales tax revenue this fiscal year than we do right now. So I think based on that, the city council sets significant money aside in the general fund reserve, specifically for economic downturns, so you don't have to turn the spigot off completely and cut services so you can maintain services. I think based on the fact that you have general fund reserves, and our analysis shows that we are about $3 million down, there is a justification for the use of some of your reserves to help balance the budget. Staff would not recommend expending $3 million in reserves. This budget contemplates two things that we have not contemplated in the past. One is we are actually adding fire staff, which has an ongoing cost year after year. And we have a goal to ensure that we're at 0% vacancy rates in the police department. Usually, by nature, we always have at least a 5% to 6% vacancy rate in the police department, which generates some savings. But with those two goals, in order to meet those year after year, hitting the $3 million amount, we think that then you would really be operating with a deficit spending, and that would not be a long-term sustainable solution. So we really think that the council should be thinking 2 million or less. Staff is very comfortable with $900,000 in use of general fund reserves. And I'll walk you through what that would mean in terms of cuts by department. I won't go into a lot of detail, but let me just really highlight or provide a high-level overview. If we can go to the next slide. So for the mayor and city council's budget, it would mean dropping out of the League of California Cities. It would also mean dropping out of the San Diego Taxpayer Foundation, which is something you just joined this last year. So it's nothing that we have a long-term commitment to. The city manager's office, we would cease any additional studies on potential replacement or refurbishment of City Hall. We would forego some maintenance to City Hall. We would also cut back our contributions to organizations, and we would reduce our promotions and advertising, including part of our video promotions budget. The city attorney's office would cut out some supplies that they currently receive. Next slide. City clerk's office is already pretty lean. I already sent you an email that was not intended to be snarky, but cutting out food, cutting out water for city council meetings. We would reduce postage and some operating expenses. We would probably reshuffle some staffing if we have an opportunity to do so. Looking at HR and finance, they both presented very lean budgets. In fact, they made some significant cuts in their budget. So we could really only cut a few items, including some wellness programming funding, some additional training budget besides the other training that we've already cut as part of the first round. Finance, we would reduce some of its professional services and forego that. And community development would be pretty dramatic. We would forego a required general plan update that the state's asking us to do, and we would push that off a year. We would also consider contracting out some aspects of community development, and so that would have some staffing implications. On the police department, we would curtail or limit some of our wellness programming. We would reduce some SWAT training and SWAT ammunition purchases. We would reduce our crime-free multi-housing program. And we are due for some technology replacements. We think we can cobble through or limp through another year or two without those replacements, but that would be on that side. For fire, we would eliminate the Fire Reserve Program. We would let other agencies take over our portion of the nurse navigation program, and that may have to go away completely. We also do a deep cleaning of fire stations periodically. We would push that off to another year. And we would also contract out fire inspections that we currently use and employ for, and then we would recoup those costs on the businesses that we do the inspections for. Public works, we would reduce our tree maintenance this upcoming year, except for areas that there's a dangerous situation. We would reduce our general fund power washing. So the bus shelters, which are funded through TDA funds, would continue to be washed, but other areas that are funded through the general fund wouldn't be washed. We would forego some building repairs, and we would forego some replacing some aging equipment, and again, put some duct tape on it and keep it going a little bit longer. Engineering services, we would eliminate some professional services, as well as reducing operational supplies and repairs and maintenance. And then for parks and recreation, we would eliminate America on Main Street. We know that the P-Bid does not have in its budget money for Haunt Fest, so there's a potential that we would either reduce Haunt Fest or go out and try to seek some additional sponsors for Haunt Fest, but there may be some reduction in the scope of Haunt Fest. And then we would also... And then, we would also look at some staffing changes in parks and recreation. Next slide. So, there's a lot, that, there was a lot of things there. It all adds up to $1.2 million. There would be some difficult cuts to do, but I think they are reasonable and they're things that we could get accomplished. And we're hoping that our residents won't feel the full brunt of those cuts. So, at this point, in order for the finance department to finalize the budget, we're looking for your feedback, your general overall feedback, your direction on how much of reserves you'd like to use. And that will then help dictate how much we need to make cuts. And then, any other feedback or direction that you have, we'll take that and present a final packaged budget for you at your next council meeting. So, with that, staff's here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Graham. Kind of sobering, but thank you. Let me see if there's any speaker cards for this item?
No speaker cards, sir.
All right, it's back to us for discussion. Gary.
Graham, what percentage of the budget is recommended as reserves by the League of California cities and what's our situation?
Well, it's not the League of California cities. There's an accounting, accounting best practices and it's around 25% to 30%. It depends on a lot of factors. It depends on risk factors. For example, I would say ours should be higher than what the standard is because we are so dependent on sales tax. And a lot of our sales tax eggs are in the car sales business. And so, when there's a, and the construction business. And those are the first industries hit when there's a recession. So, we're a little bit more susceptible.
Excuse me for sorry. When you say 25%, is that of the, of the overall 285 million?
That's 25% of your general fund expenditure. So, of the 105 million dollars, correct. We are about at 60% right now. We are projecting, assuming a $4.2 million deficit and that we would somehow cover that with the general fund reserve. We would actually drop from about 60% coverage to about 50% coverage. That's a pretty big drop in the coverage. That's why we're not recommending the full 4 million for sure. And we're not recommending any more than 2 million. If that helps answer your question.
Thank you very thorough and thank you for the options. Some questions. What is our current general fund reserve dollar amount?
I have that right here. It's $61.1 million.
Okay, sounds good. Is the CarMax sales tax included in the revenue projections?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is the hiring freeze going to result in a reduction from 415 down to something lower?
415 number of employees or?
I think your budget assumes for, headcount of 415 employees.
So, we would still budget for those, that number of employees. We would not remove them from the books. We would just slow down the hiring of those until we achieve that savings of $900,000. There are some positions that we just cannot not hire. Police, fire would be examples. If we get critically low on other positions, we would have to hire those. But if we had a vacancy with a department director, for example, we may figure out a way to use an acting director. We may shift some of those responsibilities to either Mr. DiMaggio or Ms. Thorne. So, we would figure out ways to do that, but that would not affect that 415 number. It would just affect the dollar behind that 415 number.
Okay. Let's go to the slide called balancing the budget. I, it would, going forward, if we have numbered slides, that would?
We, we actually do. The numbers are hard to read, I admit.
We need like those glasses you get in a Captain Crunch box or something like that?
Okay, you probably want to go to the last one of these.
You know, where you dig your hand down into the cereal and forget, you know?
There you go, that one.
Okay, thank you. So, 2.1 million, you went through some slides after this called bridging the gap, department cuts. Is the department cuts, is that what the 2.1 million is on that slide called balancing the budget?
If we can go back one, no, go back the other way. You're right there. So, the 2.1 does not include those cuts. Those are just, those cuts are some reduction in our?
It was a slide before this one, I think.
Correct. It would, it would be not, not filling, hiring freeze. It would include not filling some sinking funds. It would have some minor reductions in staffing. It would have reductions in training.
Okay. So, that, on the, going back to slide 20, I think it is, the deeper cuts is the sum of all the?
All those other cuts, yes.
Got it. Okay, so, here is my thought. For years, the city manager's office and really all staff have, we've enjoyed surpluses that we have added to the general fund through good financial management. And that's every department. We've, we've had years when it's been 400,000, where it's been a million. And we haven't spent that money by creating new programs. We just said, let's just add it to the pot. Now, we have $61 million. And that is 60%. And we have different pots of general reserve. We have economic uncertainty. We have the 20% best practice and things like that. So, I think, and I remember past couple of years, I said at some point, the public's going to ask us, what are you going to do with this growing reserve? And I think now is the time. I would agree with you, $2 million is a good number to take from general reserves, that we do not need to make those deeper cuts of 1.2 million. I am concerned if we start cutting things like wellness programs, professional development, longer wait times in engineering services. I don't think that's necessary. You've been good managers of money for several years. Let's reward that and, and give that money back so that we don't have to cut services to residents. So, I would say, my feedback is use 2 million from reserves, avoid the deeper cuts. And your initial cuts are good. That's where I land. Thank you. Michelle, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I agree with Mr. Goble. I think he's got a point. We've been really frugal and we've done really well in getting our reserves. And sometimes, you just have to use that extra money. You've got a point. I didn't think of that. Cutting, you know, wellness service, because we want to retain our employees. If you start cutting some of these other things, they're not going to want to stay, maybe. I agree. So, you're saying take the whole, cut the 3 million or 4 million from the reserves?
No, right there, we have to come up with 4.2 million.
Right.
He's found some initial cuts, which was a couple of slides ago, about 900,000 from a hiring freeze, not adding money to some of the other deferred maintenance funds or some, whatever you want to call it. Reduce staffing possibly, I don't know. Some training. I think those can be timing things that you do with. And so, he's come up with 2.1 cuts out of 4.2.
Right.
Let's make the rest from reserves.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's not cut wellness. Let's not cut services.
Right, let's not make the deeper cuts, take, make the initial cuts. Those we can do without and then take the deeper cuts from the budget, the whole amount.
You don't have to do deeper cuts.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, take the funds out of the reserves so we don't have to do the?
That's right.
The deeper cuts. Sounds good to me.
Gary?
Could I see the deeper cut slide, please?
I think it's slide 18. Uh, there, yep. Oh, the deeper cut slide. Oh, the, sorry. There was a whole bunch of deeper cut slides. There was like six slides of deeper cuts. You want to go through those again?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there's the mayor and council.
Okay, League of California cities, I could easily do that. And taxpayers' foundation, city manager's office, city attorney's office, sorry. Let's see, city clerk, postage, operating supplies, food, staffing. I'm okay with that. I think we need to keep the wellness program, professional service, fees, postage, I'm okay with that. Community development, general plan, update, staffing, I'm okay with that. Police, that's a big chunk, but I think those are all important. And then, crime-free multi-housing, I think that we get a big bang for the buck there. And contract out fire inspections, I'm good with that. Reserve fire program. Nurse navigation, seems like that was very helpful. And getting rid of frivolous calls. So, I'd kind of like to keep that. I don't know how much that is, but I know, I know other cities have started doing it because ours was so successful.
That is $30,000, by the way.
And in your opinion, is that, is that saving us money at the other end?
It potentially is, but the challenge is that we see it regularly, live within your means, right?
Yeah.
And those are nice things to have. And a lot of the things that we always cut are things that will have longer-term impacts. Like a wellness program, for example, has some dividends on the back end, but sometimes we can't afford the dividends, right? So?
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I agree with everybody that I'm comfortable with taking the $2 million of the reserves to make up the deficit. I think that's what reserves are for and I think it's practical use of, of the money. And I agree with your, your suggestions for everything else as well. The one thing I would say is maybe it's time to start being a little bit more creative and push the boundaries a little bit on raising some revenues. We've talked, we've talked, for example, on building impact fees. Maybe it's time to revisit that. You know, let's perhaps a workshop on best practices from other cities and how, how they've raised money and deciding as a, as a staff and council, what we're willing to look at as far as raising more money. When you talk about the nurse navigation program, I've always thought that you could go to the hospitals in town and say, look, we're, we're saving you so many dollars by keeping people out of your ERs. It does not make sense that you wouldn't want to put $50,000 into this or $100,000 into this program. So, I, and these are just examples, but I think you could go line item by line item and look at ways we could increase our revenues. Obviously, the easiest way to solve this problem in my mind is to make us less dependent on sales tax. And the, the way I think we could be less dependent on sales tax would be to take our own future into our own hands and look seriously about solving the Parkway Plaza problem. So, once and for all, that, that problem goes away. We're not held hostage by low sales tax at that mall, which if, if it was back what it, what it always had been, we wouldn't be here talking about this today. So, I guess when I think about reserves, I'd be, I'd start to get real nervous when we start looking below 50, $50 million in reserves. But if you could take, if it takes three to four years of some deficit spending to get these other programs enacted and, and kind of set our own course, I'm comfortable with that. If that's what we have to do, as long as we're moving forward and trying to figure out a way so we're, we know, at some point, we can stop taking reserves.
Appreciate, I mean, that would be our concern. I think the use, the strategic use of reserves makes sense, but we want to make sure that we're not using them in a way that is actual long-term deficit spending. And I think, I think the $2 million threshold probably keeps us out of that worry zone.
Yeah, assuming for about five years.
I, I would hope less than three.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the economy should be turning over. I mean, if, if it's cyclical, right, then we should be back to hopefully where we were, back to normal growth next year or the year after, right?
Are you, are you in agreement with me that there are things that we could do, that we changed our worldview, that we can increase our revenues?
I think so. I think, I mean, it's one of the reasons why we've had such focus on economic development because we know that the pie is, if we can expand the, the size of the pie, that will help us, right? So, I think that's important. I think it's important that we do these public, these public projects that encourage private development. We are, we are very low in the property tax per capita rate, partly because we have so much affordable housing. So, these new, these new for sale projects that are going up around the city have a huge impact on our, on our bottom line. These are really important projects for us. So, I think there's a lot of strategies. I, I like the idea of a workshop. I think it's probably worth looking at other cities and understanding, are there some revenue sources that they're getting that we just aren't getting at the same rate? And what are they doing that we could do? So, we'd love to present some of that data to the council.
Yeah, I'd like that. Does council feel comfortable with that? All right, do you need us to vote on this or have you got the feedback that you want?
I think we got the feedback we need. The goal would be to spend no more than $2 million in reserves to balance the budget and we will make the other cuts as necessary.
Mr. Mayor, I got just a couple more comments. Yeah, Steve?
You know, I'm okay with getting rid of League of California cities and those membership fees. That's an easy, I don't know that the taxpayers get value for that here in El Cajon. One of the struggles is we only get to keep 11% of the property tax revenue here in San Diego, whereas Carlsbad keeps 29%. And I can tell you, the value of a home in Carlsbad, median value is different than it is in El Cajon. So, we're already starting behind the curve. Where our opportunities are, for instance, there was a list in San Diego Business Journal of all the cities and the number of retail properties. El Cajon, I think, is number two behind the city of San Diego in the terms of number of retail properties. That's a lot of retail properties, perhaps overbuilt in El Cajon. So, if we can flip some of those, I'm thinking of a, of a pharmacy store that recently went out of business. If we can flip that property to a developed property with housing and, then we're adding value by going up a little bit. And if there's any way that we can incentivize a developer to do that, that adds more revenue to the city. So, there are ways, we may be overbuilt in the retail area and there's ways to try to flip that to add residential housing, which results in property tax. I, I agree with Mr. Kendrick. There are a couple of those easy shavings off the, the budget. I'm okay with the cutting the city council's cuts, just as a sign of, of a good faith to those others.
The snack budget hurt.
What's that?
The snack budget hurt.
Well, yeah. So, my 2 million does also say you can also cut those, if you want to go back to Mr. Kendrick's list, I think it was the bridging the gap. I'm okay with a $39,000 cut. I will leave the city manager's office to you. I'll leave the city attorney's office to him. Next slide. I'll leave all of those to, to you, the city manager. So, everything else, but you can cut that 39,000 because taxpayers aren't getting value out of that.
And council, I would foresee, I mean, just because they, that was in our big deep cuts list, I think we still probably have to do some of those cuts just because some of the staffing cuts take a while to effectuate. So, we'll probably be recommending some cuts, even if the council were ambivalent on the League of California cities, for example, I'd probably still be recommending that. We're still going to recommend cutting the city hall study. We're going to still recommend cutting the, the general fund or the general plan study. So, we'll have some other cuts, but it'll be less impactful to the residents because I don't think the residents will notice that we're not doing the study.
Could you also get us a list of all the properties that we own and ideas about what's, what the potential for turning that into revenue could be?
So, while these, some of these cuts are in that deeper cut, 1.2 million, that would allow you to make not as much of a cut in the first line. Let you decide how to do that without adversely affecting service to the public or morale of our assets that we call staff.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell, I think that dovetailing on Mr. Goble's points there, I'd like to keep Haunt Fest if we could or some form of it.
I think the intent was to keep it. Our con- Our concern is that without the revenue, the contribution from P-Bid, we may have to make some modifications to it.
Right.
So that would be the only thing, but our, our intent is to keep Haunt Fest.
Haunt Fest, and then come up with something different for America on Main Street or something. But, I mean, I think the residents are already feeling the pinch of a lot of things that have been, um, reduced, uh, or eliminated. And, um, this would, you know, give, not take away everything. In their, in their eyes, there's been so much taken away, Mother Goose Parade, which is not our fault. Um, you know, reduction in the, the car show, that's not the city. Other things that have been reduced or eliminated, and so if we can just minimize some of that would, I think would keep us in their good graces for a, a little bit longer.
Yeah, I, I really like the mayor's suggestion of, uh, getting the hospitals to pay for part of that nurse navigator program.
Well, the hu, the hospital district currently, the foundation currently contributes a lot, but I think what I heard the mayor saying is some of our local, uh, La Maestra, neighborhood health, even if they kicked in 5,000 each, that would cover over half of our, our costs.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, for example, um, each one of those federal health clinics that you talked about, they run a PACE program. And the whole focus on that PACE program is to keep people out of the hospital because it's basically a self-funded insurance policy that they have. So they'll even do things like go into people's homes and, and put in new flooring, so people won't trip and fall, because it's cheaper to put in new flooring than it is to have one of their patients trip and fall. So this goes along with that idea, say, it, it's better health for you and better bottom line for you if you would help us do this.
It's a great idea.
All right, anybody else? All right, uh, no, you don't need to, uh, vote.
This is the feedback that I believe we needed, so, yes, thank you.
All right, well, that was a tough conversation, but it, I'm glad we, I'm glad we had it, and we're on the right track. All right, we have no commissioner reports on today's agenda. Item 18 is my active report, which is as reported.
Mayor, I think we jumped right over 17.
Did I jump over? I am, just want to do that these days, okay. You're right. Last administrative report, item 17, regarding the city council meeting schedule. City Manager Mitchell will tell us about this, it should be a simple one.
So, uh, as we're looking at our calendar coming up, we rec, we realized, um, two things. One is we typically cancel the second meeting in August, so we're seeing if the council wants to cancel that. Again, if we need to reconvene, we can always do that if there's an agenda item that we need to do so. So that's one action. The other, as we're looking forward on the calendar, we realized that our first meeting in November actually falls on November 11th, which is Veterans Day. Uh, and if you look at the second meeting in November, there is none scheduled because it also falls on the week of Thanksgiving. So it would be bad to cancel all the meetings in the month of November. So we're recommending that the council either consider moving our normal, regular meeting from November 11th to either the 10th or the 12th, the day before of Monday, or the day after on Wednesday, or shifting it to the middle of the month, uh, on November 18th, which would be a week after. That is a planning commission evening, but I think we can create an agenda that doesn't conflict.
Thanks, Graham, appreciate that. Um, let me see if I have any speaker cards on this item.
No speaker card, sir.
Okay, it's up for discussion. I, uh, I personally think the 18th would be a good, a good choice.
I'm good with that, I'm flexible.
Anybody have any objections?
What about, um, planning?
Because they meet at 7 o'clock, usually we're done well before then, and we'll make sure that we have no evening agenda items at night.
And then there's the August meeting, do they want to cancel, any?
Craig, we'd recommend canceling that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, do you want us to vote on that?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion then, that we move the November meeting to November 18th, and that we cancel the meeting in August.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present.
All right. Um, back to activities of member, of council members, Councilmember Goble.
Uh, as reported with a comment about, uh, MTS, uh, one of the committees I sat on there is the Public Safety Committee meeting, and I was lone no vote on, on an item, four to one. Uh, they would like to move towards an administrative model only for enforcement. So if you don't pay the fare, today, you get a chance to pay a $25 fine, do three hours of community, or three hours of community service, your choice, or pay the $25. If you don't, then it goes to the court. And then the court takes over, and then the court could impose fees or whatever. Uh, the proposal by the current majority is that instead of going to court, it would go to a administrative body within MTS to work out. And if you don't, uh, do anything about there, then it just dies because it's an administrative body again. And so really, the effort to, um, decriminalize is what the thought is, will, will result in people just saying, "Why should I pay? Because I will not pay the 25, I won't do the three hours, and I won't do the administrative hearings, recommendations to do something. And if you don't pay, it goes to a collection agency." Well, by the time you add the fees for the collection agency, number one, I don't know collection agencies are gonna jump on trying to recover 30% of $100. Uh, and if it's more than that, then you might as well have just gone to court, because it's the same amount. And I'm trying to insert some level of common sense, uh, into the discussion to say, "It's fair that everyone pays a fare." And there's accountability, and there's fairness along the way. It even came down to, for you, the three hours of community service, where can you do that? You can do that at any single nonprofit organization in the city. It's not, it's not confined to four organizations. You could go down and, and work with Public Works for three hours, or go join, uh, you could watch kids at the El Cajon Rec Center play basketball and monitor them for three hours. It is a very low barrier, but that just doesn't seem to be the direction that it's heading. We still have a chance to say no in the next couple of weeks, but I'm hoping that common sense will prevail. Thank you.
Good luck with that.
Good job, Steve.
Michelle?
Um, as reported with an addition, I went to the Gillespie Field meeting this morning, and I just want to give a real quick update on the Bradley project. For those of you who live in, uh, northern part of El Cajon, Bradley Avenue is being widened, and, uh, Helix Water relocated, uh, they had to relocate the water main, and they found utility lines. So that's kind of, if you live in that area and you're disgusted with the traffic and how long it's taking, I agree. I live a half a block from that, and, um, uh, so it's gonna take a little bit longer. Uh, they're gonna be doing utility potholding, it's being done right now, or potholing. So that's being done right now, and they're gonna be going into a temporary walkway. So it's going, but it's gonna be a while longer before that, uh, project is finished. But that's all I have.
There are no joint council reports and no general information items on today's report. Item 23 is an introduction of an ordinance to establish procedures for the creation of community benefit districts in El Cajon, and our Assistant City Manager, Vince Tomagio, will tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This, this item adds an ordinance to the municipal code that allows for the formation of community benefit districts. Um, community benefit districts are a tool available to charter cities and are formed under the same statutory framework as property and business improvement districts or P-Bids, with some differences in terms of voting, um, to initiate the districts and timeframes under which they operate, and that's outlined in the staff report. The staff report also points out as an example that a community benefit district can be an option for the downtown business partners when the time comes next year to renew that special assessment district. It was one of the recommendations that you, uh, received last year from New City America in the report on, uh, various changes to the P-Bid operations. However, the, it's important to note that this ordinance applies citywide, and any group who wishes to form a community benefit district is free to do so, uh, once this ordinance is in the municipal code. Um, in summary, uh, the community benefit district is simply another alternative method to form a special assessment district for a specifically defined area of the city. And I note that, uh, Mr. Marco Lomandri from New Cities America is here. He may want to speak to this as it relates to P-Bid, um, but that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Vince. Any questions? No questions? I did want to see, do we have any speaker cards for this item? Okay. So it's, uh, it's back to the city council, uh, some, for further discussion, or someone would like to make a motion?
Move adoption?
All right, to introduce the.
And to clarify, sir, this would be the first reading of the ordinance?
Yeah, we just, uh, want to ask to, you know, to read the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, second, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present, and the title of the ordinance is an ordinance to add Chapter 2.90 to Title II of the El Cajon Municipal Code to establish procedures for the establishment of community benefit districts in the city of El Cajon.
All right, there are no close, or there are no second reading of ordinance on today's agenda, and we're now at closed session. The city attorney will recite the title and lead us into the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm sorry I didn't make that a longer title for Ms. Cortez to read. Uh, we have four, three items on the closed session. Item 24 is a closed session for a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation pursuant to Paragraph 1 of Subdivision D of Government Code, Section 54956.9. Here's a workers' comp claim of Adam Pope versus the city of El Cajon. The second is also a workers' comp claim under the same, um, Paragraph 1 of Subdivision D of Section 54956.9. The name of the, uh, the employee, uh, applicant is Travis Palladino. Uh, and then the third closed session is a public employment performance evaluation for me.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, go to closed session?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be right back after the closed session to continue the meeting. Thank you. meeting. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're back from closed session. I'll let our city attorney report on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council made a closed session on three items. The first two were workers' comp claims that, uh, direction was given to the city's adjuster, adjustment team and attorneys. And on the other item, the city council performed my annual evaluation, or biannual, or, you know, decennial evaluation, whatever it was. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this brings us to adjournment. The regular joint meeting of the El Cajon City Council Housing Authority, successor agency to the El Cajon redevelopment agency, held this 10th day of June 2025, is adjourned till Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, at 3:00 PM. See you then.